We have six items before us for the public forum. Presenters have five minutes to present, as is custom, but given the significance and the substance of the agenda, I'm proposing that we allow no more than five minutes per speaker for questions from the councilors and I'd ask people to keep their questions and responses brief to allow for that and to avoid repetition where possible. The first of these is Paul Gooly. Happy birthday. Here to address us on Oteporti Dunedin Immigration Services. Kia ora.
Kia ora tātou, kia ora te whanau whanui. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And also just a couple of housekeeping things for me. I asked the mayor about what I should speak about and he answered the question, I think, what should I wear? He said, "Brief", but I thought it was more appropriate to wear a suit than wear briefs. And the other thing is that I know that he's already suggested that you should adjourn at 3 o'clock. Given that it is yet again my 75th birthday, I'm suggesting you adjourn at 4:30 and come to the governors as per the invitation and have a cup of coffee before you work through till midnight or whenever that you get the work done. The reason that I've asked young Po Tama to be here and addressing you about the need for an immigration office in Dunedin. Aotearoa New Zealand Limited is working an embassy, known as our NZ Embassy, out of Albany Street and we constantly are working around visa applications and the number of activities that are coming. And I've spoken to some of you privately already about it and felt that there is support in this council, but we need a council-driven effort to have an office in town. We are currently dealing with, in the worst case that we're dealing with, is where there is a family where the father is paid full salary on a Monday night into his account. His employer then comes and collects it on Tuesday morning. They've been threatened with being abducted and recently they've been threatened with termination. This is in our country, this is not possible. That's at the worst end of the scenario. The other one is where we have people on visas who have simple visa requirements, but there is nobody that you can go to to get simple solutions without paying for a lawyer. My time at Otago, Prof Sims always used to say, if lawyers were and accountants were honest people, we wouldn't pay into an indemnity fund. This needs to be a public service. So again, we are coming to you as a city saying that we need your support in establishing, if not a permanent office, at least a rotating office that people can come and get those sort of answers. And Dunedin City Council seems to be the most appropriate place to do that. There are three things that we feel that we always suggest to that are synonymous with being in Dunedin and those three things are a freedom of faith within the law and we've just experienced it this morning, that this council, and we are grateful that this council allows all the different faiths to come and open a council meeting. This is, in this world at the moment, is absolutely a gem and you're to be congratulated for it. Thank you for that from an interfaith perspective and as New Zealanders that we're allowed to experience and express our faith. The other one that we know as Dunedin people is that there is a belief in Dunedin that universal access to education and health allows a person to determine their future. Sadly, in Dunedin at the moment, we have a health system and an education system that seems to be driven by greed, fear and compliance. And so the appeal to our city, to our council, is that you take ownership again of our university. Our university is struggling and our university needs to have, needs to be rescued. We have wonderful people there, but some people being paid absurd salaries, $1,700 a day, seven days a week, including while they're on holiday. Apparently that's because they're so good at management and understand difficult things that they can do. It needs your input. If you took the cleaners out of a surgery, I wouldn't be able to use a surgery within a moment. And then the third thing is a living wage and I'll finish with this, he says, because one of the things that we understood for many of you when you were standing for council is that you would stand on the basis that this city was going to provide living wage for your staff as an example for everybody else. That's the whittle that we put down. And finally, the reason that young Po Tama is with me is to ask you, please put back our coat of arms. From a multi-ethnic example, that's such a beautiful commentary. At a time when there was no compelling law, we had a coat of arms that expressed Pakeha and Maori working together. And that needs to be back there. It allows all of those new migrants to feel they have a place. And finally, and real finally, as an Irishman, only an Irishman can do, the reason that Po is here is that we want to look forward to a time, whether it's Po or one of us, Fenona, that we once again have a Maori mayor in Dunedin. So all those in favour, could you please raise your hand and say aye? How often do I get to ask the council to vote? Would the mayor vote on that?
I feel somewhat conflicted, sir. It's a maatauakamane.
Yes, a maatauakamane. Now anyway, thank you very much. And just one thing that I would like to ask you and please give us an indication by raising your hand on this and I'll leave. This being my birthday, the company's office has offered us the opportunity to incorporate a controversial company. The name of the company is Cannabis Corporation. The question is, is it appropriate for us to actually incorporate that and look at how do we manage that question? So what I'm asking is, those who think that we should have a company that would be publicly owned, called Cannabis Corporation, where we manage and educate that question, if you would raise your hand, I would have an indication of what the city thinks. So we have a unanimous vote of at least one. Thank you very much for your time. There are no questions for me, but do remember to vote for your adjournment at 4:30 and come and join us at the governor's coffee house. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, sir.
You don't have to sing happy goodnight. Kia ora koe.
Mr. Easton.
Hi, I'm Matt Easton from over the road at the pool house in the backpackers. And I'd like to talk to the council about, if you don't understand, the council. Okay? I'd like to talk to the council about the unfair system, unfair playing field that they have for backpackers and accommodation providers in Dunedin and really all councils in the country.
Can we?
And all councils in the country. Anyway, the university, the university pays no general rates and yet they put their beds on Airbnb and I think that's an unfair system. And I think the fact that we are doing, we're doing a building at the moment and we're doing four fire doors that cost me $12,000 and it's sprinkled and you're making accommodation providers comply with all your safety regs and yet, and yet there are none on the Airbnb providers. So I think this is an unfair system. Sorry, I've been flat out all morning and I have this written out. Right, I had said to the, the DCC has no concerns is it about the Freedom Campus? I have written to the fire brigade and fire department and said to them, the cars there are parked so close together on their car parking sites that if a gas canister blew up, then there will be a tremendous amount, tremendous explosion. And I contacted the DCC about that and they said, "It's not a commercial business, so we have no part in it." So does that mean there's no safety regs with the Freedom Campus? So I'm happy to comply with all the safety regulations knowing that's keeping people safe, but I would like you to know that under the, under the, now, because of your, because of the DCC's allowing Airbnbs and Freedom Camping, I've had a lawyer look at the rules under the Fair Trading Act as we believe this is anti-competitive behaviour and also the DCC is allowing unfair practices. The act also requires that all fees to be reasonable and under the last one, I believe that all commercial accommodation providers should be able to not play commercial rates. And so that's what I have a lawyer looking at at the present to see whether we can contest the DCC and their, and the things that they're allowing at the moment. So I'm sorry, I should have had that a bit more well-prepared, but anyway, that's the crux of it. I would like to know if the, what the DCC thinks about that. Do they think it's a fair playing field?
I'll take that question as being rhetorical, but are you happy to answer questions if councilors have them? Any questions? Councilor O'Malley?
This is a question you wish more of staff of, last February we had a council agenda item around rate changes as it relates to Airbnb and we ended up sending that back and I was just wondering where the status of that was because I think it relates to Mr. Easton's.
Thanks councillor, yeah, the paper's been drafted at the moment with the intention to bring it back February, March?
For clarity, that was looking at rating properties that are being used, rented out wholly under Airbnb to be rated differently as opposed to the current situation that they're rated as residential units, which is part of your concern.
All right, yes, okay, and that's only, that's only part of it. The other part of it is the safety concerns. Are people able to just put, make a, you know, I've got a wee apartment I'm building around the back of the backpackers at the moment and four fire doors at the bottom cost me $12,000 to make sure that the four people above were safe. Now, that's something I'm happy to do, but, and yet you're prepared to allow Airbnbs to to just put somebody in anywhere. So I think it's got to be, I think you've got to have stricter, stricter rules than that. And my second question was, the university and the polytech, they put their beds on Airbnb and they have no, and they pay no rates. So is that fair?
To the questions. Councilor Alder?
I note that Queenstown is looking at a policy and I was wondering if you had researched into that and what you thought about what could happen with Airbnb? What would you consider a good thing?
Yeah, I see, I see, that's something towards, something towards of what they're doing, but they're also talking about a bed tax and that doesn't, that doesn't get any of the Freedom Campers that just come to town and I see them every, all the time down at Countdown and they're just buying, buying a dozen, dozen of the cheapest beer and a couple of loaves of bread at a dollar fifty each and heading away up, so you're getting nothing out of the Freedom Camper. You should be, and with the carbon usage today, they're talking about the carbon miles used to fly here and so they're flying here, running around the country and going home again and you're, and you're making nothing out of it. Beggar's me why you would bother allowing it.
To the questions, thank you, Mr. Easton.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Heath, Mrs. Smith.
I'm going to speak on behalf of the Sims Building Action Group. Wanted to address the meeting with regards to the Sims Building. Worth reminding elected members at this point that the papers are in the non-public session. So I'd be cautious about framing any questions you had as to not betray that confidence, but we're all yours.
Thank you. Alda Koto, you do have a paper that we're speaking to and Tim will speak after me. Thanks for making time for our group to speak and update you with regard to our work on the Sims Stevenson Cook Building. For those new councillors, there are papers that were circulated at a previous council meeting. Since we last met, we've made progress on a number of fronts. We're in regular communication with two renowned heritage architects, Jeremy Salmon of Auckland, who's been involved in a number of projects repurposing historic buildings, both in Dunedin and outside of Dunedin and in the north. And Nick Bevan, who sits on the board of Heritage New Zealand, they're wholeheartedly supporting our project and are both taking a very strong interest in our progress. We've begun the process of setting up a trust which will be known as the Port Chalmers Foundry Trust. We intend to call the building the Foundry. We're commissioning a report on the history of the building and have approached two eminent historians to undertake this work. We've made application to Heritage New Zealand for listing of the building. We've commissioned an engineer's report which will commence once we have access to the site, which is our next step. We've held our first fundraiser and we'll be having two larger fundraisers earlier next year. We've got many other ideas in the pipeline for fundraising. We've had a very productive meeting with David Bainbridge and we've met with Kevin Windus from Port Otago. A letter of support from Otago Gold Fields Heritage is attached to the material that you've got. We've been refining our thinking around uses for the premises. Local artists are very interested in using the space. Maritime Union of New Zealand is interested in a permanent display space for the memorabilia. We maintain an interest in supporting local markets in the venue, exhibition space, studio space and the venue for performance and functions are key activities we'd support using the space as well as ensuring that the history of the building is told in a contemporary manner, which at the same time provides for other uses of the facility. All these activities would have an arts and/or heritage focus and the facility would be essentially a community resource for both Port Chalmers and Dunedin. We'll apply through the annual plan for funding for the roof to be reinstated by the DCC. We're prepared to fundraise and apply for grants for ongoing development of the facility. We presented to the West Harbour Community Board in late November where we advised that we're seeking to preserve the whole building. We asked for their ongoing support for the project. We asked that the board request that the DCC send the OPUS report to us after this meeting today. David Bainbridge has subsequently confirmed that this would happen. And we asked the board to support a request that no actions would occur regarding the Sims Stevenson Cook Building until we've had adequate time to prepare our reports and develop a firm concept plan. To do this, we require the support, help and guidance from David Bainbridge and Andrea Farmina, similar to the support that the Highgate Presbyterian Church received from the DCC. I'll hand over to Tim to talk about the building itself.
Thanks Chris. Hi, my name is Tim Heath, I'm an architect and we've been lucky enough to be involved with quite a few heritage projects in Dunedin, both natural history and older buildings, including the Town Hall, the Dunedin, Otago Museum, Williams Old National Bank and currently Garrison Hall. Now, one thing that all these projects have in common, although they're quite different teams who work on them, is that the owner organisations show a great deal of vision and leadership to achieve what they achieve. I want to go through quickly what Heritage New Zealand, how they assess buildings because there are five points. First is social, cultural, environmental, economic and the importance to national identity. First, I want to talk about the social, cultural. Back in 1975, when I was just fresh out of school actually, there was a small group, we thought that Port Chalmers was going to change a lot because of containerisation. We were correct, what was a town that was established, well, it was laid out by Kettle in 1840s actually, before Dunedin. It was a pretty rough place. Come 1975, containerisation, which was from abroad, radically changed the community. All of a sudden, it wasn't a port town any longer really because it was enclosed by a big fence and a lot of people, whereas most people worked at the port, it suddenly became a dormitory suburb of Dunedin and the community changed. And I think that change is very important, that we should bear that in mind.
So Heath, your five minutes is up. So I'll have to ask you to wrap up quickly. Your five minutes of presentation is up.
All right. I'd like to just finish with a quote from another colleague, Tony Watkins. Heritage is telling the stories that make us who we are and I believe that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. Questions, councilors? Councilor Walker?
Yep, thank you for the presentation. If the only feasible option identified by the group was to save the older part of the building, is that something you would consider?
Okay. Sustainability is very important to me and the fundamental principle of sustainability is diversity. Just as in ecology, things change, they always change. So to say, lay out one use for a building, when a building has probably got alive over 100 years is unrealistic. Therefore, you need to have diversity in a building, you need to have the ability to change the uses to which it is put. Now to do that, you actually need a slightly greater area rather than a lesser area. And the other thing that's very important to that question is that in Heritage, you try and keep the integrity of what you're trying to save. You try and alter it as little as possible. And to do that, if you need additional rooms such as staff rooms, studio space, storage space, all very practical, then you probably need the greatest places well.
I'll move that we extend the time for public forum beyond half an hour. Second, a councillor Gary, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Councilor Vandibus?
I'm wondering if you're aware that what you're really up against trying to save this building is that the footprint of it is very valuable for car parking space. If we were, for instance, to actually build a multi-level car park, each car park apparently is worth about $35,000. If you're going to be able to release even just 40 car parks there, you're looking at over a million dollars. How is it that you think you are going to be able to confront the financial pressure to turn it into car parks when rebuilding it is obviously going to cost a lot of money and not give a financial return?
Well, we think that the historical value of the building is far more important than a small number of car parks. I think it's unlikely that a multi-level car park would be built there. Port Otago have talked about their need for a car park for their workers. They do have land that they could use for their own workers for car parking. And coming back to the point about saving the older part of the building and not the newer part, whatever we did with the older part of the building would need, would need space for parking and for other activities to occur. Some of that parking could occur inside that space. We're looking at a variety of concepts for the use of that space. But all of the other facilities that would need, to not have the whole space would interfere with any successful use of the older part of the building, which we want to maintain largely as is.
So what you're saying is that for you to be able to utilise the historic building and save its historic value, you too would need some car parks internal and that you need the space of both sections of the building to do the museum and the associated returning uses that you're looking forward to?
Yes, I totally agree with that. I would add to that, that at the moment the building is already a community asset. And what you're doing is you're comparing heritage with car parking. And we've actually checked the number of car parks you would get in both buildings. One's about 280 square metres, the other is 250 square metres. And because of the configuration of buildings, the most car parks you'd get in there is probably about 40, ah, sorry, 20, 20, not 40. Now, the, given that we're looking at use, as I said, uses will change over a hundred year span. I can give you a use now, I'll flog it from Cockatoo Island in Sydney, in fact, where they had old boat buildings, a boat yard there and they threw a lot of bean bags on the floor, put up multiple screens, gave multi-channel headsets and they, you could actually pick what history you wanted to watch. Now for cruise ships, you can chart for that, so you've got an instant use if you want it. But realistically, it is a community building, it will be a multi-use building, to be truly identified with that community. Thank you.
If I could just emphasise, we're not looking at a museum where we would want to preserve the historical, the history of the building and we would be looking at bringing back in some of the engineering history information and so on, but it wouldn't be a museum as such.
Kia ora koe. Thank you. Mrs. Parsons? Okamane Marie, the next five minutes are yours as you choose.
I'm here to ask the council, and it was very appropriate today, the latest list of, the latest list of people who were getting acknowledged by the city for what they've been doing, were in today's paper, which gave me some positive vibes. And my husband did an amazing lot for this town and was never acknowledged for what he did. My late husband. I know he's not with us anymore. He died six years ago. But the first thing he did with his father, they went out to the albatross, where the albatrosses were, fenced it off so that dogs and things couldn't attack the albatrosses. That was a long, long time ago. Now, Richard was the president and then patron of the Kaikarai Brass, Kaikarai which became the Kaikarai Metropolitan Brass Band. He was acknowledged by the Brass Band Association even though he had never played. Normally, the things that they gave were for people that had played. He was awarded a certificate for 25 years in the, in the, looking after that band. He was part of setting up the Tari George Train. There were three people involved and Richard was one of them. My husband is Henry Richard Wayne Skinner and as far as I'm concerned, he still is. So he did the Tari George Train. He was part of getting the disappearing gun into the system out of Taro heads. He was part of the cavalcade, getting that established. The most amazing thing that I think he ever did was he brought the cruise ships to Dunedin. Now, who knows that? Nobody. He had a very tiny tourer company of his own and he was able with, And he was able, with using that, he brought the cruise ships to Dunedin. I'll just let that sink in for a second or two. The things I hear about this is that it has brought millions of dollars to this city of ours. Spent the first 10 years after he set up the Tari Gorge Train, he was a voluntary manager. And for years afterwards, what he said on that train stayed as part of the commentary, because the people that followed were so impressed with what he talked about. Since these people are bringing millions of dollars into the city, I'd like to know why we are closing the Carriageway at the Octagon. And I noticed that they have been given, picked up places at Countdown on the one-way system. Have you ever caught a bus or waited? There is enough shelter there for about six people. So what, the rest of them just get drowned, do they, as we get our southern showers? The Centre City New World at least has lots of seating and verandas and toilets inside as well, which might be handy for some people. I have been trying since June to get the intercity bus company to go back to what they used to do, which was have a place for people to go into with telephones, for taxis and toilets. Well, as you know, everybody is still stopping at K. I can't even convince them to move to Centre City New World to pick up their passengers. I realise I've had my five minutes. It's amazing, at my age, how quickly five minutes goes. But I would like Richard to get recognition for what he has done to the city. Millions and millions and millions of dollars' worth of money has come into the city. And I would also ask that you stop this nonsense about the Carriageway to the Octagon. These people need somewhere to shelter when they're waiting for the buses. And the companies, the businesses that are in that area, they need them as well. People aren't going to walk for miles to go shopping if they're parked somewhere else. Okay, it's made me very nervous, and I thought I might even burst into tears since I have lost my husband. But I didn't, because he's standing right behind me as we talk. And I'm just sorry I wasn't brave enough to do this while he was still alive. Thank you.
Time feature or flaw, depending on your worldview. Are you happy to take questions, if there are any?
Sure.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Vandis?
Thank you very much for letting us know. A whole lot of things that I certainly didn't know, and I probably should have. What kind of recognition were you looking for? Were you anticipating that the city council might give your husband, Richard Skinner? Given that he did a whole lot of different things, albatross colony, disappearing gun, Tari Gorge railway, cruise ship visits? What kind of recognition? Are you thinking of a plaque somewhere or some sort of award? What did you have in mind?
I like the idea of some sort of a plaque somewhere. But I'd be happy with just something that I could look at occasionally and just remind me of how wonderful he was. I don't mind.
Thank you. And one last question. I've heard it said that the Tari Gorge Train was one of the main reasons that we originally got the cruise ships to come here. And it's interesting, you've made that connection. Did Richard see that as a connection as well? Did he see the Tari Gorge as a way of...
He knew that they had the train, but he also knew that they needed extra people to use it. So that's why he did it.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Right. Tell me when to start. Firstly, thank you for your time and the opportunity here today to represent retailers, hospitality and tour providers that have been in touch and engaged with the chamber. Businesses have legitimate concerns about the communication they've received. Since that initial communication, though, we've been pleased and appreciate the level of support and engagement from the staff, from the council. If we step back to where we had our prayer, it said, we talked about there, let the will of the people. So today, I am just the mouthpiece of the many. And I want to give you some background. On the 17th of April in 2018, at the Planning and Environment Committee, that committee reaffirms the support for the pedestrianisation trials to be undertaken in the Lower Octagon and Lower Stewart Street. On the 18th of May, and the annual plan was moved and decided that there'd be $75,000 a year in operational and community planning budget in 18 and 19 and 1920 to support the pedestrianisation trials associated with activities in the Lower Octagon and Lower Stewart Street. I've asked whether there are any other resolutions that adapted to this, and I'm told that there wasn't. So it is my belief, and I understand, that this could have been a staff decision, and thus, one that can be affected by you as councillors. I have a couple of examples that I'd now like to run through with you as evidence for backing up why we would only like to see the Lower Octagon and Lower Stewart Street. One, last year, on the odd day when the Octagon was closed, tourists and numbers aboard were affected dramatically. On Sunday during the annual tour run, on what should have been a busy day, our city number, with a number sitting on average around 48 to 96, we received less than 20 bookings on that day. Two, by previous figures, we're expecting a 50% drop in sales at the peak of the cruise ship season for me. This announcement came just after days of receiving stock for the season costing a three-figure sum. Three, my daily customer count and sales recordings for the four days of the Glow Trial, that's Thursday through to Sunday, in comparison with the same days for the preceding two weeks and the following two weeks. On the Thursday of the Glow Trial, my sales numbers were down 73%. On the Friday, they were down 46%. On Saturday, they were down 37%. On Sunday, they were down 72%. The overall result was greater than a 50% reduction. Four, access to the eyesight for tourism operated vehicles. We have three to four tours leaving daily from the eyesight. All our brochures, websites, online information, et cetera, that we share with the visitor and visitor industry states the eyesight as our pick-up point. We pay the eyesight annual fees plus commissions to display our brochures, sell our experiences and rely on them as major touchpoints for our Dunedin visitors. The eyesight network is promoted by Tourism New Zealand as their official information providers to New Zealand. As stated, eyesight bookings make up around 5 to 8% of our business income. The other aspect that needs to be addressed is the tour coach line. How will they be affected? What disruption will they have? It is the belief of those that I represent here today that there are still better options out there for improving that visitor experience and for working with businesses, hospitality and tourism providers. Using the Upper Octagon, maybe dropping off the passengers outside Nova and having the tourist providers outside this very municipal building for pickup and then for pickup in George Street to take back to the boats as an option. Another one could be using Upper Stewart Street to drop off the passengers, tour operators outside the municipal building and then pick up to go back to the ships via George Street. These are still options, I think, that need to be investigated. Business needs the support and understanding from local councils. They need them to make good decisions based on pre-consultation before communication on what is going to happen as provided. Open forums, meetings should take place well in advance so that purchasing, et cetera, should be considered. Retailers have already had their potential income affected by council decisions, and they need to hear strongly today that this council values them and the commitment they make to employ people, to pay their wages that goes towards rent and food. They pay council rates, they pay rent and they provide a service for so many in our community. And they need your support. Thank you.
Do you realise that this decision, or these decisions regarding the changes in the Octagon and where the cruise ships go have never come to council and we haven't voted on them?
I am aware that there could have been some more discussion had with councillors.
Mr McGowan, do you know when you first became aware of the design as it is existing right now?
Can't remember the exact date, but it was about two days after that the information got sent out by email to the affected parties. I didn't get it as an affected party. It was passed on to me.
Was that the first time you had been contacted or heard of it?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Lam?
Thank you for your comments. Do you have, there's been a proposal for another area around Cumberland Street by Countdown, I believe, for the bus to stop there. Do you have any concerns about that?
We believe that it is better than the first option, but it is not the optimal option that we are looking for. There are a number of concerns, yes, we've gone for quite a period of time. But we are looking for what could still be what we believe is a better and more optimal option for both the visitor experience and for those in hospitality, tourism and retail.
Are some of those concerns around it being right beside a state highway?
Look, they don't have to cross the state highway at that stage first. Some of it is about how do we direct them to the eyesight? How do we get them there? How do we get them to where the tour buses are going to leave? How do we make sure that that experience is seamless? What we don't want to do is create a situation where we have it like it is overseas, where you have touts, where as soon as you get off the bus, you're accosted by thousands of people trying to sell you all their things all at once, and particularly if that's in the rain.
Councillor Barker?
Thank you, Dugald. What do you see as the process towards a solution?
Look, there's been some really good discussion going on. And I think that's been in the fact that we've seen some movement around where the buses could be, still suboptimal. But we also have had a lot of work which hasn't been talked about, which is around deliveries and all that, and that's making really good progress. And I think that's going to prove bad outcomes. I still think we've got more engagement to have. We're bringing this to the council, because you can have the ability to change some of this by putting a resolution later in the day. We're going to continue to work with the staff, and they are listening. But we are still going to be trying to look for that, we believe is our best option, which is the Upper Octagon or using Stewart Street to get them there. Because we know they have made, some of them have serious mobility issues.
I have a question, Mr McGowan. To the best of your knowledge, how much influence does the city have over the cruise ship schedule and the number of days over a season that there are boats present in Port Chalmers?
I couldn't tell you that. You'd have to ask your staff.
You'd be surprised to find the answer was none?
Yeah, but what we do have the ability to change is the experience they have when they land on our shores and to create a great environment where they will always want to come back to our place. That's the key for us, is how do we make sure that the visitor experience is all that it possibly can be, so that we still remain the city of choice? Now, New Zealand and the people who are on that tour boat yesterday are suffering a terrible tragedy, and that is going to create anxiousness amongst that tour group industry. We need to provide certainty and great experiences for those who are still continuing to choose our place to come to.
Yeah, thank you. I had a follow-up question, and it's just around the schedule and the timetable. And were we to end up in a point where there were boats in every day for weeks at a time? Your contention would be that effectively, the sole purpose of the Octagon in the summer season should work backwards from catering to that market?
No, I don't believe the sole purpose of it. We think that, I mean, as retailers and hospitality people have stated, they are very, they are able to cope with the closing of the Lower Octagon and the Lower Stewart Street. But what they need and what the passengers and what they think they need to be able to get the most out of those passengers' experiences for them to be as close to the eyesight, where they can get those choices, and close to where they can pick up and get to their next journey and/or to take part in retail and hospitality shopping. Because we know that when they first arrive, we know what they're looking to buy. And when they're leaving, we know what they're looking to do when they leave. So we've got some pretty good trends on that.
If I can ask the same question a different way, is it your contention that the needs of that demographic or that market segment should take priority over all other activity in the Octagon over the summer season?
No, not at all. But they contribute, you know, when you look at the 6,000 people coming into our city and one experience, we want to make sure that they have the best experience that they possibly can. They are part of everybody else that's part of this community. And, you know, what we want to do is to be able to make sure that they have the opportunity to enjoy our great hospitality, our great food, and to understand what makes Dunedin unique, which is being able to walk through a short period of our city and get so much culture out of it with our buildings, our heritage and the people that are within it.
Councillor Stones?
Thank you, Worship. Just to clarify, you, the work you've done would suggest that if we allowed the cruise ship drop-off buses to drop off in Stewart Street beside the cathedral here and then leave via the Upper Quadrant, down George Street, back in tomorrow place in a way, that that would have a much better outcome for the people you represent?
We believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Reddick?
If you think that we've already arrived at a suitable solution, then if not, would a review of the whole situation be helpful at this time?
So I think we have arrived at a position which is still suboptimal for retailers, hospitality and for visitor, for the visitor sector. But also, I believe it's suboptimal for those visitors that are coming to our city and the experience they're going to get stepping out, walking into a supermarket versus stepping out, walking into what is our beautiful Octagon with its magnificent buildings, and all of a sudden, people are impassioned and in love with what it is to be Dunedin.
Councillor Alder?
So just summarising and asking what you think on this is, the sector is quite happy with the resolution for trials in the Lower Octagon and Stewart Street and had accepted that as part of an experience for the people of Dunedin and visitors. But it's the closure of the Upper Octagon that is of concern.
Well, it's the closure of the Upper Octagon, which means that you can't get transport provided through in there because it's pedestrianisation, so that becomes the issue for the transport, getting people into that area. So yes, they're happy for the Lower Octagon and Lower Stewart Street to be pedestrianised, but we would like to see that access through the north part of the Octagon, the Upper Octagon, or using Lower Stewart Street to use. That would be ideal, because it gets our visitors and other people. Because we're talking masters games, people could be dropped off into those same zones later on at night. So it meets both purposes, not just those for tourism.
Thanks, Dugald. Appreciate it. Mr Fehlin? Don't panic, people with unanswered questions, you'll have another opportunity. Ocham Paul? All yours.
Dugald's a bit of hard act to follow, really. My name's Paul Fehlin. I'm involved in several tourist, visitors organisations in Dunedin. I'm here today representing Dunedin Host as Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Dunedin Host is a primary industry body for tourism operators in and around Dunedin. Its current membership includes individuals, incorporated companies, local institutions that provide services and activities in all areas of tourism, such as accommodation, attractions, tours, transport, retail, hospitality, training and consultancy. I'm here today to raise concerns that Dunedin Host and the tourism industry in Dunedin have regarding the Octagon Experience 2020 or the Octagon closure. Issue one, communication and consultation. From our collection, I was aware there was going to be some closure... From our collection, I was aware there was going to be some closure of the octagon during the busy summer season, but at that stage, no details. Like many, I assumed it would be like Ed Sheeran concerts, the southern half of the octagon in Lower Stewart Street for a few days. On the 11th of November, an email was sent from Enterprise Dunedin on behalf of DCC, Community Events and Urban Design Teams with details in the extent of the trial. It was publicised to the public and in conjunction to this, DC staff canvassed business owners in the CBD and the affected area. This was the first time in which businesses and stakeholders were told of the actual details, or that is the first time it was made evident to me. Since then, my phone, emails, conversations, attending meetings and have not stopped. Where was the consultation and communication? Since this has become public, there has been some confusion in the industry between two projects occurring at the same time, trial closure and an event, the Masters Games. It is my understanding the council in 2018 approved the trial pedestrianisation of the southern part of the octagon and Lower Stewart Street, not all the octagon. In the Martin Jenkins Final Report on Enterprise Dunedin in October 2018, which was unanimously accepted by council at the January 2019 council meeting, out of the 19 recommendations or action points from the report, points one and two on page 50 state, "DCC and ED invest time and attention rebuilding the relationships with the tourism sector. This should involve open and constructive dialogue across the sector which results in a shared improvement plan and commitment to changing the dynamic on all sides." It also states, "Which should be based on consultation with stakeholders to ensure that there is a commitment to regular two-way engagement, communication and collaboration." I believe the DCC council and staff have failed on these two points, communication and consultation. Issue two, where do we go from here? There is the debate about revitalising or pedestrian-friendly the octagon. I think most would have to agree, there is a need for a review, but that requires well-managed approach as many people's livelihoods depend on it. We host approximately 2 million visitors in Dunedin annually with approximately 10% cruise ship. During the autumn experience, we expect to have over 40 ship arrivals, estimating 45 plus passengers and crew, quite a substantial figure. As the year ended September 2019, international visitor spend was 233 million, domestic was almost three-quarters of a million. There has been a lot of discussions around cruise ship passengers' accessibility to the octagon, which is a valid point. I also have concerns around the overall visitor's experience, the potential risk to the city of jeopardising not only the cruise ship but other tourism businesses. It is estimated per year the visitor spend for retail is in the vicinity of 274,000, 274 million and in food and beverage, 126 million. What will be the effects of these businesses if this proposed closure goes ahead during the pinnacle of the tourism season? There are many stakeholders who have voiced their concerns of lack of communication or lead-in time for these changes and what is DC doing to mitigate these changes? I do have to acknowledge the DC staff have made an effort since the 11th of November to work through the challenges that the proposed closure will have, but in hindsight, we should not be here today. There have been many versions and different scenarios that have been investigated with all parties being cooperative. I just want to make sure if the closure of some form went ahead, all possible solutions were exhausted. A recent suggestion from local operators of accessing the octagon via Andrew Street, Smith Street to the Upper Stewart Street, dropping off in front of the eyesight with pickups around the corner of George Street could be a possible compromise. We will continue to work with DCC and all affected parties to mitigate the challenges to ensure the visitors in Dunedin have the best possible experience, allow businesses and the industry to thrive. As Chair at Dunedin Host, I'm advocating there is no 100% closure of the octagon during this period, that if there was a partial closure, that cruise ship shuttles, local and national operators have access to the octagon. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Would an urgent review of the situation of the octagon closures be useful?
Could you turn your microphone on, please, Councilor?
Can you hear me now? Thank you, sorry. Would an urgent review of the octagon closures and more engagement help?
Well, I think we're running out of time. Cruise ship business and also the local operators and we're talking about advertising, marketing, and this is part of the problem, that all that was done pre-season, the marketing of all the businesses and for local operators. It definitely does need a review and where we go from here or going forward, most definitely. But I think we're in a situation, we have to make a decision, one way or the other.
What would make businesses happy? And operators?
Pardon me?
And operators.
I think similar to what Dougal said, if we, I guess to get through this and get over the hurdle, one would prefer no closure and we have access with what we normally do on a cruise ship day for all local operators. But if that was insurpassable, I still have not seen the layout or the footprint of the Masters Games, which they keep coming back to us stating that is one of the main reasons why we can't have the Upper Octagon. We have still not seen any evidence of that. But worst case scenario or best case scenario was access that Upper North Octagon.
Councilor Millie.
Thank you, Mr Fielan. Just confirming again, it was 11th of November that you first heard of this plan?
Yeah, again, it was a communication for operators that were directly involved by that. Again, I got that second hand.
And that was a consultation on a basically a finished plan as opposed to a co-design request or anything like that, correct?
Definitely. There was no consultation or feedback. This is what we're doing.
Can you comment on the relative turnover of a tourism-based company in the summer months versus in the winter months?
I mean, I can't say roughly. It definitely is rough. You know, one would think 60, 70% summer to 30, 40% winter.
And so in a trial, there is, there was obviously a series of unknowns, so therefore there'd be a certain amount of risk at place. I mean, obviously you could get more people going past your shop, but you don't, you have an unknown effect on your business. So would you say that a activity that went on during those months would be the one that was most likely to have an impact on your survivability or viability of your business?
Well, it's definitely, and who would be responsible or who would want to wear that hat of being responsible for people's incomes that are in that octagon area and not only the octagon, the wider and local operators that are impacting on their livelihoods at the height of their season?
And their last, just last question, by mid-November, you would have a lot of operators already submitted or committed themselves to a lot of funds, either buying in material or printing maps and other such things that if they had found their operations centred on this area, would now be potentially affected by it in a negative way?
Well, it's definitely, there would have to be the remarketing of that material and also through crews. I've been communicating with some of the crews, organisations involved and even cruise liners having the confidence to sell a product when there's uncertainty with where they're going within the city. So it's the people on the front desk of the cruise ship selling those excursions that would start losing some confidence selling those local operations and tours.
Councilor Lord.
Yeah, Mr Fielan, I just had a question regarding your desire to keep the south side of the Upper Octagon, sorry, the north side. Would you have an objection, because I would have personally thought that you could either brought traffic the opposite way to normal, take them down Stewart Street and turn right into the north, to the southern side, and that would keep these buildings and the cathedral free for photographs and that sort of thing? Would you have an opinion about that?
I guess, and again, acknowledging, working with council staff and traffic, and I'm not a city planner or traffic manager or what have you. At some of those same meetings, we had a representation from Ritchie's, which is the contractors for the shuttles. We met separately with Dunedin Host members that are local operators with coach tours and things. They put a proposal through just recently, as of Friday, as their, I guess, preference. I guess I'm not there to argue which is better than the others, it just needs to work from a traffic management perspective. But again, emphasising what Dougal has said previously, is the customers' experience. If you're on that bus, would you want to be dropped off at Countdown or the octagon?
My question was on this side of the octagon or that side of the octagon?
Sure, either would possibly work. Yep.
Finally, Councilor Vandis.
You've suggested no closure at all. It sounds to me like it's an easy do-nothing option and that you simply delay the trial. Did I understand that correctly, that you think the trial should be done at a later time when it had been properly consulted and worked out?
That would, that would be definitely the preferred.
Okay, so given that we have a rare, easy, do-nothing option, which I'm always delighted to hear, why do you think it is that it's being pursued? Do you think it's bureaucratic pride? Why do you think it's being driven through against such strong resistance?
I don't think it's particularly fair, Councilor Vandis, to ask Mr Fielan to speak on behalf of council staff.
I'm not asking, I'm asking for his view, your worship, not on behalf of council staff. Far be it from me to go there. Your view, sir, what do you think is the reason the easy do-nothing option is not being taken against so much resistance?
I believe the Masters Games have created a situation where the council or the council staff have overcommitted and to rearrange the Masters Games to another location and trying to work this out creates a potentially bigger issue for them.
Thank you.